And again, right now.
So when can we see a copy of it?
I think, I think it's in process right now. I mean, Melissa and I have been working on-
When is-
Next meeting?
No.
Are you calculating replacement cost values?
Yes, yeah. Because some of the, some of the timing on some of those issues, because some of that stuff was installed in ninety-two, this is how the whole water meter thing came up essentially. But some of the timing on some of those issues, for assessment methodology purposes and for life's-
Span.
Span, some of that was miscalculated because of over time, you know, when things were installed in ninety-two, some of the assumptions were made for recent, more recently, or two thousand or two thousand four, whatever it was. We're trying to go back and try to recalibrate some of those things. We have enough reserves to replace some of these things because there are long in the tooth relative to meters or anything else. So that's something we're catching up on.
So the next meeting is three weeks from now. Can we see a copy of it?
Um, I think-
The water sewer and irrigation stuff-
Whatever we've got-
Whatever we have, we'll give it to you, we'll put it back on. And I think Mr. Guy had also offered to spend an afternoon with me to share some of his knowledge and background and his-
Super.
Yeah, we've been focusing specifically on the utility side right now, Kerry, just so you know.
Thanks, right. I'd just like to make two comments.
Go ahead, Ben.
First of all, if we're gonna do the kind of job that I think needs to be done, and I think Mr. Doris and I are pretty much in agreement, you can't expect DMS to do that in addition to all the other things they've got in their contract. It's probably gonna cost us some money before we get finished with a job that we're proud of. Secondly, when you say to Brian, "Let us see what you got in three weeks," you're, you're putting an awful lot of pressure on him, I suspect, and you're, and you're, and if he delivers, you're gonna have a product that you're gonna pick apart, okay? So what I'm-
I'm not the picky person. There's a couple other people that are a little more picky than I am.
I wasn't being, I wasn't being, I wasn't, I wasn't being personal. What I'm saying is, if we wanna see something, give them, give them time to do a job that they're proud of, the job they're proud of before they, before they show it.
We only wanna see what their, what their work in progress is.
Well, well, if you're okay with it to let Mr. Guy be my mentor here for a couple of weeks to, to help to-
For two weeks.
Well, Mr. Guy is going on vacation in the-
Ah, see, here it comes.
And he comes back. Don't expect me to do it in the next two weeks.
We've been waiting for a year, and before that, we were waiting for a year, and it's been several years. And if it's not finished in three weeks, I don't know that that's the point. I mean, that wasn't my request. It would be nice to start seeing things that look like what this is, because if we could see the schematic for the thing, then we could say, "Yeah, that's, now we need to fill in the blanks," or, "No, we can add some other adjustments necessary." But to me, I'm gonna be uncomfortable until we actually have a table or a series of tables that build up to say that three point three million dollars is the right number, or four million dollars is the right number, and we're really fully funded. I mean, just because we've raised all the money we need and the asset has exhausted its proposed useful life, doesn't mean we have to replace it if it's still working. It just means we're, we're fully reserved, that's all. But we ought to be able to figure that out, and then, and that should naturally, it shouldn't be any big mystery. We ought to be, you know, raising a hundred thousand dollars a year or two, or whatever that number is, and it ought to be in the operating budget. And there's, I, you know, what has me uncomfortable, aside from the fact that I don't think this, this is all full of round numbers and, and what looked like a bunch of plugs, is also that there's nothing in the operating budget saying, you know, "We need to replenish anything." And that just also, and, you know, and if we knew all that, we would also know whether we have three million dollars sitting around to go improve the part because it's extra, you know? But we don't know that.
I, and I just, I just wanted to comment on this. I have to assume these numbers didn't just come out of thin air. You must have asked somebody about how much do we have in playground equipment, about how much do we have? And so I'm imagining that staff did give you some numbers, albeit round numbers, they're, they're, they've gotta have come from somewhere.
Absolutely. I just wanna point out two things, just to clarify. The schedule that you're looking at here, we used in a combination last year of the reserve advisors' study, if you will, in combination with current replacement costs. For example, you know, we actually got invoices, got quotes, that types of things for projects. And on a separate note, on the utility side, all the subschedules that you would like to see for this, the OO one or the general fund, we actually have been working very diligently on putting those together. So we actually have something very similar to this cover sheet, backed by multitudes of information as far as counts, how many meters, how many fire hydrants, how many, how many, the length of PVC pipe. I mean, it's very detailed. And we were able to put that together because we had that level of detail. We, this particular schedule is what we put together with the information that we were able to assemble ourselves. It would be wonderful if we could get some kind of a solid reserve study, someone to actually inventory and provide these schedules so that we can create some type of cover master schedule like this.
That, again, was supposed to have been done before.
I think the reserve advisors, that was the intent of the reserve advisors.
No, I'm-
I was just saying, that was my understanding.
Back, back when?
Number to the level that, yeah, number to the level-
No, we need something that, to the level, in Enterprise Fund, we've, we've spent a lot of time, we have a lot more detail, and I think you'd be very pleased to see it. And I can definitely show you, I can show you right now the schedules and subschedules we have. And I can, we can, they're work in process, obviously, work in progress. We're constantly looking at them, updating useful lives, adjusting them for when we put new assets in, adjusting the useful life, because obviously, a meter today is gonna be, lasts longer than a meter in nineteen ninety-two. So, you know, there's a lot of moving components in that, and we're up, we're, you know, I'm working with Brian, and we're very much on that. But it would be very helpful if we could have some kind of an inventory, asset inventory done for this CIP or this reserve allocation.
And I agree with Bill that we probably have to hire somebody to do it, whether it's DMS or the financial advisor person, whose name I can't remember, or somebody else.
Or the one who did it for Pelican, yeah.
But it's not likely, it's not gonna happen, and I don't think we said it should happen as the normal workflow there. I sort of thought that's what Phil said.
I think you're right. I think, you know, I think Mr. Guy maybe can help to-
Then we get it started. Let me, may I ask Melissa a question when you're ready, Mr. Chair? In here, I noticed, doesn't mention anything about the pool type equipment, like the heaters, the filters, the pumps, the, which always we seem to be going through propane heaters, pumps.
I agree, absolutely.
So that's just missing, that's all. Well, yeah, it's, it's, um, filters, that's, that's, those are, those are annual, every six months, every-
Right, a lot, a lot of-
Those, they don't, you know, you're not gonna capitalize it, you're not gonna reserve for them.
Maintenance.
But they're-
I would say they could-
Hydrothermal, but that's okay. Yeah, you got three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, that wouldn't be on the chart because that'd be a new improvement that'd just create an asset that would then be a capital purchase.
Now, I just wanted to ask, Melissa, you told us, I think, a couple weeks ago, that we have four thousand water meters in there.
We have sixty-four hundred water meters.
Sixty-four hundred?
Give or take.
Yeah. Now, if you, well, first of all, if I were doing it, I wouldn't capitalize those damn things, to tell you the truth. I would, I would replace them as they needed to be replaced and not worry about either capitalizing them or, or, or setting up reserves for them. But there are other things that you've got a lot of, a lot of volume on. You have to make decisions, where you, you know, where you, where you draw the line on dollars or whatever, on capital assets and whether you're gonna reserve for them or not. Every one of those decisions impacts what the, what the final product looks like.
Yeah.
Are you capitalizing? You're not capitalizing individual water meters, are you?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no. What we have on our, um-
Maybe with my imagination, maybe with my imagination.
Schedule now is, we have a, we have, this is how many water meters we have, sixty-five hundred. This is their value, and it, in, in terms of doing a gateway-wide meter replacement program.
That's a capital improvement.
That would be a capital improvement. But just replacing water meters ad hoc or whatever, no.
Okay.
No, but that ought to be reserved for.
We wouldn't reserve for it until we made the decision to do it, or it was highly likely that we were gonna do it.
Right now, when we're replacing water meters ad hoc, it, it's just routine maintenance and replacement. It's just OO one, or not, or four hundred.
What's the game plan is, Bill?
That's the largest-
Once, once we make, once we, once we adopt the plan, a plan, we haven't adopted much, except to go after an RFP, then the likelihood is that a good portion of that is gonna come out of, out of reserves, would be my guess. Wouldn't you guess?
Well, in the Enterprise Fund, it's really called the Capital Improvement Program, and I think it's just-
Capital Improvement Program, you know, there's, there's some similarity between that and the reserve, but we'll get into that another time.
Well, the Capital Improvement Program is the annual implementation of our spending intentions for capital.
Right, which is gonna include?
Presumably, if the reserve process is going right, the money for it ought to be in the reserve fund.
Right.
And, and the things we're spending money on, the capital expenditures ought to, there ought to be some connection to things we're collecting money for. But I would, I would, I'm not sure I follow why we wouldn't have been collecting money to replace meters over the course of the cycle, over a cycle, because after ten years, they have to be replaced again.
Some of them have to be replaced after two years, some after six, some of them after eight.
Yeah, well, you figure an effort just for like-
We can spend the same money every year.
It gets down to a point of diminishing returns.
Well, okay. I mean, I think that's gonna turn out to be the largest capital item we have, for instance, in the, in those programs. It's not like we replace water lines and irrigation lines.
Well, the, the lift stations are the biggest issue, is-
Yeah, they're quite a big issue.
Lift stations and wells and, yeah.
Yeah, the wells.
Right. But I do want you to know, to Margaret's point, those asset values were, there were some thought put behind it for the level of detail that we were gonna have made available.
Well, it's nice to know we're moving forward. I think we'll get move, get moving on this budget, because I'm like, we're-
We're not gonna be able to hang, hang out too much.
Not as long ago.
Then all night.
Margaret has a comment.
And that is, I know that we're gonna be going over the budget over the next couple of meetings.
Right.
Can we please get for the next meeting, the actuals through June thirtieth?
Yes. Onto that document.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
We've got May ones in the book for you today, so we'll get to the most current that we have. Along that, financials, maybe I'd like-
I have the March.
Oh, in the, in the budget, but the financials, it's behind another tab through May.
Well, when I'm, when I'm looking at-
I know, put, impose them onto there. I'm saying, whatever I have, I'll put on there to update.
Thank you.
The auditor, who was to be here today, has agreed that he will come without charge, but he was unable to come today, and he's asking if he can come to the meeting on the eighth. So since you'll have an auditor here, that might be, you know, a good opportunity for even posing some of these questions or issues to him if you want to. If it's all right with you, he can come at the next meeting.
I read the auditor report. I didn't find anything in it that I wanted to talk to him about.
Well, we've got him to come, man. He's got to come now.
Okay.
Better find some, Bill.
We'll talk to him about reserves.
There we go.
His opinion on a separate fund for a cat, I don't know.
Been on a lot of these boards over the years, and then all of the good ones, the auditor report was boring, but it's worth having, and having the guy stand here and tell you that everything's okay, and that he got the cooperation he needed, and there's just a few questions. It's worth having him tell you answers to.
You're right when it says that in the report.
It does. It does.
So he'll be here at the next meeting. And then, as far as the budget goes, just as an update, the, the letters are going out on Monday, I believe, to all the residents advising them of the, we have received an increase advising them of that. The Pelican Preserve folks have already distributed something to their residents to prepare them for that.
So, did Bill move to adjourn?
No, he didn't. He said, "Supervisor, come." He's, that's what he said.
I think we have a couple more tabs.
Speaking of a lightning detection system, why don't we have, we've got soccer fields, we've got fun parks, we've got, um, the pool, the pool area, why don't we have a detection system?
That old horn from the mash thing is-
This thing called a weather bug outdoors equipped with a wind sensor, rain gauges, yada, 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 horn blows.
We have lightning.
Where?
I thought we did have one.
Yeah, it's hard to come to think of it.
We do have, and it's got the horn and the-
It's loud enough that they can hear it in the pool.
How often is it inspected?
It's, it's often, and it was just repeat, uh, one of the compressors was just repaired.
Is that the one I hear at my house?
Really? It's very loud.
That's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
That's great.
Well, then, let me tell you, it works.
Just in the backswing?
No, I thought the golf course had it because it goes off regularly, and you can most definitely hear it at our house.
Good. Good, good. Can't hear it in Pelican Reserve.
We'll fix that.
We have, we actually have an agreement in store, guard.
Oh, that's long, yeah, that's cool system.
I think we can probably get you like a loudspeaker top and attach it to the top of your gatehouse.
That's fine.
So it'll just come out.
Actually, we wanted it on Bill's roof, each three doors away.
I do have one item, and that is-
That is?
That is your district.
We've got, that's just definitely-
You got a number of things, but I would like to raise this one because it's, I have identified a candidate who we are, would like to present at the board for hiring as your operations manager. Brian's resume is all around here. Let me pass one out, maybe, but-
Get him, Brian.
Get him, Brian.
Brian Huiyan is a former city administrative officer from Kentucky, the city of Fort Mitchell. One of the things that he did in his educational pursuits, which included a doctorate of public administration and, which he intends to complete, but a master's of public administration, which he has completed, is he has focused his education on contract management. So in Kentucky, he was preparing and studying for, you know, just what district management services really are here, which is contracted management services to government entities. We've talked with him extensively. He's interviewed everybody in our office, and he is preparing to move and live here in the-
Little Louis.
Little Louis Pizza.
And, yeah, and then we don't have to-
That's how we're gonna judge. I like this one about the Mercedes-Benz dealership better than Little Louis.
I'm kinda into Little Louis Pizza.
But I've had him to visit with the staff. He was, he bird dogged the last meeting, so he got a, a view of what he was getting into. And I'm confident that he can do a, a good job of helping to direct the staff here. As to the comments that we've had in the past about needing more engineering and more of a public works-type approach, I think we're going to, we certainly have a two-million-dollar water and sewer operation that's about as minimally staffed as you can find and run as probably, you know, efficiently as possible. And, and I think there's gonna need to be some attention to that, but I don't feel that the public works person is the, necessarily the, also the administrative person that we need. And I think this gentleman has the, has the credentials. So I'd look to you all for guidance. We can, we can back again to interview with you all directly. I didn't wanna have him in front of you to, uh, tonight, to give you a chance to tell me what you-
He wouldn't have wanted to work for us either, hurt us tonight.
Well, this was a lot better than the sum of our names.
That's right. You're absolutely right.
Other than the fact that it won't end.
What, baby? We can take care of her.
We still have our highly paid professionals that need to address-
Talk to me, Danny. What are you gonna start showing? Let's get you over to them.
Oh, I thought he was there.
No, sir.
Unlike you, Billy, hang to me. Couldn't you see the blow?
We were very, very good, came close to letting me leave early. We had two items that you talked about early under my section, and if you just talked about the third one, I could have left it an hour ago.
Well, have you reviewed the plot, and do you recommend it?
Yes, sir. Please make a motion.
I'm new. I'm new about the plot.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye, Danny.
You just have to learn to interrupt.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it would have cost us a lot less if you'd interrupted him. He missed the part, though, where we talked about the fixed budget fifty con- amount.
What, huh? What?
That's okay, we'll get there.
Work on it, Danny. Tell me.
Yes, I think, uh, y'all got the email yesterday with the, regards to charter school and the revision to the suggested settlement agreement. And we wanted to have some discussion with regards to that, and some thoughts or concerns that I have and Mr. Altman or Mr. Newbar may have. The, as noted in my email, the, the email itself, I deem that confidential for the time being, says it's part of mediation and continued settlement discussions, but the drafts, the settlement agreements themselves are, you know, are, are public record. The, you can see the difference between the two, from the one that get, the district proposed and when the charter school proposed. I'm not comfortable with on the first page in that one, one, one A, using their characterization that all of the assessments that were imposed were assessments for special benefits, because it was a combination of debt service assessments and then maintenance assessments, which are different than benefit assessments. Uh, that's one area that I have a concern with regards to. We get to the discussion concerning, and the language change, about the various alternative changes in the law. I'm, I'm comfortable with that provision in one A. In one B, what's gonna, it's a board discussion as to the, I think it's a cleanup language as to the charges for the school's use of the, students' use of the district's facilities. In one C-
Are we are gonna be obligated to allow the school to use district facilities?
Like any other user. There's no obligation that they, if they do use them, they'll use them at rates charged to gateway residents use. That's what the proposal indicates.
If they aren't a gateway resident.
Correct.
So I don't wanna charge them for rates charged to gateway residents.
Okay.
They just sued us so that they didn't have to pay what gateway residents pay. It's just why we can establish rates for gateway residents.
Okay. Uh, with regards to the traffic patterns, although there was an indication that she gave back to me with regards to the documents I found in the development order about the routing, I think it's, I mean, any further response, she's in a five-day trial this week, so I'm not surprised. But I think it's appropriate to still come back, to have them direct the primary access to be Daniel's Parkway.
So I, I looked at what you sent us, and I guess, do I gather, you're not recommending their version of this?
Not entirely.
You have to accept it or not. So you're not recommending it, right?
Recommending a substantial portion of it. We can go back with revisions that, as I noted in one A, your suggested revision in one B.
Right, but the bottom line is, until they agree to something that either you or somebody else recommends, I don't know what we're gonna do.
But I, also, I think it's important to go on to get some of the board's thoughts on these, is, we get some of your discussion items are very helpful to go back to them. Any other board members or Mr. Altman have any other thoughts on this, your proposal? No, Mr. Altman, I think that shake of the head indicates a no.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to follow your recommendation, our recommendation.
So in other words, you're still negotiating split the guidance with them?
Well, and I think, again, we've had some, I think there's at least two items, or three items right now, I think, that we need to go back to them with. We're getting down to, I think, the point one percent aspect, though.
Okay.
Uh, the difficulty is we have, the next board meeting is not until August eighth, I believe, correct?
Correct.
And we, and we have, we'll be doing a number of items for discovery during that time because we were pulling off doing depositions and efforts to try to save costs as we approached the trial docket. Trial docket's in September tenth before Judge Boda. And I think we still, we can resolve this on August eighth, we can. We have to ultimately resolve it by August twenty-second, which is our budget adoption date, come back to our waters regardless. So that's, that's the current posture. I mean, and then, again, if the board has any other concerns about this, I'd like to know so we can have a, have a final document recommended for your approval, and then come back with it.
They still are not, by the way, wanting to budge off of the traffic control thing. It really leaves us out in the field.
Yeah, and I think, again, we've had the discussion with regards to the-
The development order.
The development order and Lee County controls, you know, that aspect with regards to it, and, um-
Which apparently has been brought to their attention before, but they just kind of-
In Lee County, we brought to their attention whether they're compliant with it, and Lee County hasn't really been aggressive on it.
Be it a motion. We have a major complaint. You're gonna have him come in and-
Contacted them a number of years ago, I believe, two years ago, I believe.
I know, we signed a lot of them or something, but-
Okay, anyway, next time it happens.
Fast motion and engage later.
In the meantime, I don't think we have anything we could-
If it's voted, just do it.
Unless there's some additional comments that we all have on the text.
If you ask, if you're going to fire him, be he's in a position.
Okay.
You sure you want him, you want a motion to, for that?
And, and, yeah, just, I don't, I don't think we'll need another closed-door session, but no, at least I can ask for it. I'd ask the new advice and pending litigation to have a closed-door session scheduled with August eighth on the charter school litigation.
Do you need a motion for that?
No. Just as long as the board agrees to have that, we can always cancel it.
That's, that's fine. I agree.
Okay, thank you.
If it's named, it's named.
Yes, thank you.
Do you need, um, Peter? Pete, do you need anything to go forward with this?
Yeah, I, yeah, I need the board to approve me hiring him. I think part of my contract is that you have the, you know, the option to approve. The last time I hired James and brought him in, and then you approved him after the fact. So I can put him on a probationary point, let him work a little while, come here and get his formal approval, and see if he waits to complete his relocation and tell him that it would become formal, but I would like to have somebody in place, possible.
No, he's just relocating from need, right?
Yeah, well, he's, he's not really relocating. He's, he's temporarily there, waiting till he finds the job for his wife and him, and where he's gonna live in Florida.
That's what, that's what my question really was. So do you need a motion to, I think we need to really need someone in that position. It'd be really nice to have. This is your recommendation?
Yeah, and, you know, the, what level does the board wanna have in, in its selection, I guess?
I haven't had any opportunity to review his resume, other than the fact that it has just been given to us at the end of the meeting. The last time it was, "We gotta hire somebody, we gotta hire somebody," and it was the fact of, "No, my benefits are running out, and therefore, we had to immediately decide to take the person on, and the person left." I'm not in the mood. So I've expressed my, my feelings, and I'll give you a vote to go right along with it, if you wanna bring it to that point.
Well, one of the issues is, is if we wait until the next meeting, then another three weeks go by. Is there some reason why you wouldn't consider accepting your recommendation on this gentleman?
Yeah, first of all, we're, we're, we're in a situation right now where we have a person that I believe that the funding was seventy-two thousand dollars a year, and we have it on a, "Well, we'll catch you at the, at the end of this when it's over." Granted, it may not be a full year, but seventy-two thousand is a significant amount of money in the budget. Having said that, we've already got that budgeted, we're already waiving that. If Peter wants to do it on a, he wants to give it a trial basis and see if he can even work with a person, and then we find out from the staff how all of that's working together, then come up with it at the meeting on the eighth of August and hear all that information, which I think is important, and to hear from him also, that he feels that he's willing to take on the commitment as a lasting commitment. Some of his times in service are a year to two years at the most. Um, so I'd like to give it a little bit of time this time, especially after when we had the last shot.
So I'm, I'm hearing almost that there's not gonna be opposition to me giving him a probationary employment op- opportunity here, and making sure he knows that he's not been approved by the board if he accepts that.
And then it's, in his best interest, too, that, you know, if he, I, I would think that in a three-week period of time, he would know if this is really a good fit for him also.
Then you wanna object to that?
Whether he wants to put up with this or not, you know, or vice versa.
I have no objection to that.
Probationary sounds okay.
Well, he'll agree to it, but my observation is that, um, I'm, you know, my overall philosophy is that you ought to be able to pick the people that you want to pick. However, we built in the idea that we would have some approval over the person designated in this, this particular role, and I think we really turn that into an empty letter, we don't at least see the guy before we approve him. So I don't know that he has to come on probation, probationally, for my purposes, but I would at least like him to come to the podium and say who he is, and let me get some sense of, you know, what I, what I think, otherwise, there's no point having me approve him.
Yeah, but I think some of us, at least, did see him last time, kind of, you know, and there wasn't a lot of back and forth, but I'm more concerned that the staff people that are here that have been here, um, and that have been a part of this teen family, whatever you wanna call it, um, I wouldn't mind seeing how that interaction goes, and hearing back from the people that have been here for a while. Hey, yeah, this works fine, 'cause it's gotta work that way.
I'm more concerned about the person coming in, 'cause we've actually lost two people pretty quickly over the last three years. We've had three, and two of them we lost within four to six weeks, and that doesn't, you know, I, I, I'm more interested in hearing what he has to say also, because, you know, if it, if he says no after three weeks, there's an issue that needs to be resolved, so that we don't keep having that problem, whatever that issue happens to be.
All right, well, I'll keep you, I'll give you all an email tomorrow, and let you know what, uh, you know, what the timeframe and, put him on the agenda for the next meeting, for you all to make it, uh, give me an approval, if he's here to, uh, appear for you.
And in the meantime, he'll, I'm assuming, be here on a daily basis, on a couple days a week, or was it planning?
I'll have him come in and do his thing, and, if that works for him.
Is Brian also gonna be here during that timeframe?
Uh, not on a regular basis, no.
Okay, so, he's not just gonna be-
He's not gonna be just testing, I'll, I'll hire him, subject to the board's approval, he'll know that, and, and that'll be, you know-
Well, I'm also thinking of it in terms of, he's not just gonna be thrown into the office and said, here you go. Someone will be here, and that's why I was asking if Brian is gonna be here.
It'll be me.
Okay.
It's in Mr. Altman's, uh, best interest to have the guy be successful, if you're gonna, hire him even on a, on a temporary basis.
Right.
I just wondered, it, I, you know, 'cause I didn't know how available you'd be during that period.
Yeah, I'll make this important.
All right, there's gonna move to adjourn.
Second. Aye, I heard an aye from Altona.
No one was talking, you know, it's a two. It's all participatory, public and formal government.
Thank you, Bill, I'll be in touch with you, well, you're gone for two weeks.
About, about ten days.
Okay, I'll see you when you get back, then, and set something up to go over that with you.
Did, did you get, you signed?
Yeah, he's all signed up, he's all done his job, he's not efficient. He's worked it, he's got it everywhere.
That's a toll booth.
Will you please, are we running out of these, if we are? What are you guys, why are you using different colors?
It was probably a different day, a different flavor, this is pistachios, lemon.
Okay, though.
I'll see you soon.
Oh, they work for a resident that couldn't hear, so we keep them there. Actually, I think it was Dolores's husband at one time, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I never noticed that before.
No.
Wait, I just heard those, at least, that's weird. Our dog snored.
I just, I need it to block my犬吠.
Our dog snored.
Are any of those black eyes out there, and have them at the hole?
She squeered in a pie, but she still, still, at least.
Has your wife been sick about the neighborhood? I put you in the ambulance, to the garden.
Well, the costume's gorgeous, because there are a number of them, all by costume, so, uh, yeah, I mean, what, thirteen already?
Yeah, every time we lose one, I go, oh, and I think of you, 'cause we've seen your wife.
I mean, if ever wanted, just for grin.